And welcome to those present in the council chamber to the first meeting of the Health Scrutiny Committee for Lincolnshire in the new Lincolnshire County Council term. My name is councillor Richard Cleaver and I'm the chairman of this committee. On my right is my vice chairman councillor Chris Reeve and on my left is democratic services officer Jess Yates and also present in the chamber is our scrutiny officer, Simon Evans. For those of us in the chamber, if there is a fire alarm, we need to leave the council chamber through the rear doors and then through reception and assembly in the car park at the front of the building and await further instructions. In addition to welcoming all the members of the committee to this meeting, I should also like to welcome councillor Steve Clegg, executive councillor for adult care and health and his executive support councillor Maria Hume, welcome. Other participants will be introduced when we reach their item or they first speak. A couple of housekeeping announcements before we begin the agenda, the meeting is being streamed via the county council's website and all your comments will remain accessible online after the meeting. With this in mind, I would like to welcome members of the public and the press who are watching. Can I remind everyone to ensure their mobiles, laptops and iPads are now on silent? Requests to speak will be circulated by the vice chairman, if you wish to speak, can you please raise your hand and we will make a note? Thank you. When you are invited to speak, please switch on your microphone and please speak directly into it so you can be heard. When you're finished, please remember to turn off your microphone, the hearing loop is now activated. So, moving on to the items on the agenda, agenda item one is apologies for absence replacement members, Jess.
Thank you chairman, we've received apologies from councillor Grantham and district councillor Welbury, we've also received apologies from district councillor Wesley who is being replaced by councillor Mullilly, thank you.
Thank you, thank you those as noted. Next item on the agenda is declarations of members' interests. Members of the committee are reminded that they only need to declare any relevant interests which they have not declared on their declaration of pecuniary interests form. Do any members wish to declare any interest? I wish to declare that I've been appointed by Lincolnshire County Council as their partner governor representative on the council of governors of North West Anglia NHS Foundation Trust, sorry it's quite a mouthful. Is anybody else aware of any, Liz?
Yeah, thank you chairman, so as a member of Healthwatch, I also work for Lincolnshire and District Medical Services which runs some enhanced GP access services, my interest is registered with Healthwatch but I thought particularly for today's item, I should declare that, thank you.
Thank you very much, anyone else, anything to declare? If you become aware of any interest at any point during the meeting, you can declare it then, obviously that'll be recorded in the minutes, thank you. So, item three is the minutes of the meeting held on the 12th of March, we've actually missed two months, so to confirm the minutes of the meeting on 12th of March 2025 as correct record, they are found on pages three to 11 of the agenda pack. Do I have a proposer? Thank you councillor Mackinson Saunders, councillor Morgan, thank you. All those in favour of adopting the minutes, please show. Anybody against, any abstentions? One, two, three abstentions, okay, thank you, thank you, those are adopted. Moving on to chairman's announcements, item four on the agenda, I should like first of all to express my thanks on the committee's behalf to those members who served on this committee previously for their hard work and diligent service over the past years, particularly Carl Macy, our previous chairman, and Linda Wooton, the previous vice chairman, as well as other members of the committee, councillors Mark Allen, Chris Burke, Sarah Parkin and Tom Smith. My announcements were circulated with the agenda on pages 13 to 15 and my supplementary announcements were circulated on the 10th of June, I hope everybody got them. Does anyone have a question or comment on the announcements, please? No, in that case I will take the announcements as noted, thank you. So, moving on to item five, the role of the Health Scrutiny Committee. Item five was circulated as part of the agenda pack on pages 17 to 53, this item is for noting and sets out the role of the committee and the context within which it works. Do you have any questions, please, on that report? We've tried to make it as comprehensive as possible because we thought it was appropriate at the beginning of this term, four years, that people were just reminded of what we do. Councillor Mackinson Saunders, thank you.
I was just wrong, we've heard at great length at every meeting I've ever attended and at length today, but we suffer huge lots of deprivation in this legislature and I'm so sad that I'm the only person that is in this chamber to represent the people, our residents, we are paid to represent at this Health Scrutiny Committee and really sad that we've got nine possible councillors but one of them can come along and support me in the climate of land and services of recent in Lincolnshire, really, really annoys me, makes me very sad, I appreciate this is for Lincolnshire but all the same, we do have huge problems and the more...
Thank you councillor. We, I hear what you say, we are of course all here to represent the whole county and we all need to bear that in mind when speaking and I would remind you, this is not a party political committee, thank you. Sorry, any other questions? Could you switch your microphone off please councillor Mackinson Saunders, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Any other questions, we'll take that as read and move on. Sorry, we need to note that the terms of reference are noted, sorry, we need to record that the terms of reference have been noted, do I have a proposer on a second there, please? Thank you councillor Scalisi, thank you councillor Mackinson Saunders, all those in All those against? Thank you. Any questions on the questions of the role of the committee, obviously can be emailed to Simon if you have anything that you think of later, thank you. Moving on then to item six, GP provision, this is our six monthly item on general practice provision in the county, we're being asked to consider two reports, one from NHS Lincolnshire Integrated Care Board, which was circulated as part of the agenda pack on pages 55 to 76, the other report is from Lincolnshire Local Medical Committee, which was circulated on email on Friday the 6th of June. I would like to welcome our presenters, Sarah Jane Mills, NHS Lincolnshire Integrated Care Board, Nick Blake, programme director, primary care, NHS Lincoln Integrated Care Board and Dr Reed Baker, medical director of Lincolnshire Local Medical Committee. I'd like to welcome them and first of all, if Sarah Jane and Nick, you would like to introduce your report please and then Dr Baker to introduce his and then we'll move to members' questions, thank you very much.
Thank you chairman and thank you for inviting us back. This month's report is quite comprehensive as it's the first time we've been to the committee with the new members, so if you'll indulge me, I will just talk through a little bit about general practice and how it is delivered across Lincolnshire. We have 81 GP practices across the county and they are organised and worked together in 14 primary care networks that were introduced in July 2019. In your pack you will see the map of the primary care networks. The Lincolnshire Integrated Care Board has got delegated commissioning responsibility for the GP contract, it is a national contract and we are responsible for managing the arrangements across the county. And that includes working with practices to achieve the core ambitions that are set out in their contract but also the specific details of the NHS plans. In terms of supporting them, our role is very much to understand the population need and then look at how we can work with practices to meet that need in their local communities. In terms of currently across Lincolnshire, there are 824,000 people registered at GP practices and over the last year, so the last financial year, GP practices delivered 5.68 million appointments, that's an increase of about 4% on the previous year and every year we are seeing that there is increased demand for GP services. I think it's well understood that 90% of all contacts in the NHS are with general practice, they are, if you like, the front door to NHS services, working alongside other primary care colleagues, particularly pharmacy, optometry and dental. And recent reports have again highlighted that general practice is a priority for the NHS, both nationally and locally. In May 2022, Claire Fuller, Dr Claire Fuller acknowledged the importance of retaining continuity of care. What we have seen over recent years and particularly since the Covid is there has been an increased demand for on-the-day appointments and on occasion that has diluted the continuity of care. There's a lot of work at the moment of resetting that and I will talk about the work we're doing with the national team through the NHS pilot which is specifically looking at that. The three areas that Dr Fuller highlighted in her report were about streamlining access to care and advice for people who get ill but only use healthcare services infrequently and over the last couple of years, we've seen some specific developments in pharmacists, community pharmacists as being a complementary service for people who need that care and advice and that's something that is positively developing across our county. The second area she highlighted was about providing more proactive personalised care to people living with more complex needs, often described as people living with long-term conditions and that could be a range of issues, including physical and mental health, long-term conditions and that's for all ages. Often we think about that being older but there are quite a lot of young people and children living with long-term conditions. The development of primary care networks has been really complimentary to thinking about how we deliver local services to support that particular group. And then the final area that Dr Fuller highlighted was about helping people to stay well for longer and you will have heard from Wes Streeting that he's got three big ambitions for healthcare services, one is about prevention as opposed to treating illness, so really encouraging people to think about how you can self-care and maintain a healthy lifestyle and general practice is really, really important in that. I've described in the report and I won't go through all of the details but what general practice delivers, it is a very comprehensive and quite complex range of services that include the sort of like core services and you will see in Dr Baker's report, he refers to the amount of funding that is allocated per person in terms of healthcare, that is based on a formula, there's lots of debate about whether the formula is the right formula but there is a national formula that looks at the per-person allocation and then it is weighted to reflect the population need, so it's not a straight formula, you will see, we often talk about a raw list size and a weighted list size and the weighted list size looks at the complexity of people that a particular practice is caring for, so that could be to do with age, gender or particular conditions, so rural, or the nature of illnesses that practices might be supporting. There are other elements of the funding and that's about approximately 50% and this makes it very different to the way that other NHS services are funded and it's quite a complicated formula and again, not to go into too much detail but that includes rent reimbursement for the premises, it includes opportunities in terms of funding for things like vaccinations and things like that and that means that for general practice, they need quite a lot of careful consideration in terms of how they capture all of their different activity because the funding is quite complicated. In terms of the services that general practices provide, the majority of general practices are focused on their core hours, which is 8am till 6.30pm and then working together with their primary care networks, they do provide extended access outside of those hours and at weekends. The delivery model has evolved over time and that's very, very important in terms of both making sure that we are meeting patients' need but also in terms of utilising the digital technology and again, if you recognise the ambitions set out by the Health Secretary, analogue to digital is one of those. We recognise that for some people, that's absolutely fantastic, for other people it's more of a challenge and so practices do try very hard to meet the needs of different patient groups. Other parts of the evolution of the model, I've talked about in terms of working with other primary care providers but also increasingly there are opportunities for patients to self-refer to services and that's very, very important because there are a number of services where patients know they need a particular intervention, so a hearing test might be a good example, they don't need to have a GP appointment to get that and it's one of the areas we want to really raise awareness of. In May 2023, the NHS published the Primary Care Access Recovery Plan and that was setting out a whole range of interventions to improve general practice access and it is one of the areas that I suspect you hear most from your constituents is about access and particularly concerns about what's described as the 8am rush and what we've seen is that where practices have embraced the tools such as total triage, they are finding that that is meaning that they are better able to match patient need with resources but we appreciate it's quite a big change for the public and one of the things that we're constantly considering is how do we help people understand how best to use their GP services. Across Lincolnshire, we have very good general practices and I've included in the report details of some targets that were set for last year and you will see that our general practice exceeded all of those targets. We recognise though that there is variation and with Liz being here, Healthwatch have just done a really helpful GP surgery which has again highlighted the variation. Our primary care team and with colleagues from the LMC work with those practices who aren't performing as well to consider how they might improve their specific areas of challenge and how they might learn from others. I've talked about empowering patients but over the last year, we saw about 3,000 people per month self-refer into healthcare services, so that's 3,000 appointments that were released and we calculate that's about 1,000 GP practice clinical hours saved, so really, really quite important. The other big area of focus is the utilisation of something called the NHS app, hopefully everybody in here has got that, if you haven't, I would encourage you to download it. It does provide individuals who are comfortable with using apps and services to do things like order medication online, look at their own records, book appointments and increasingly the NHS will be utilising that as a mechanism for patients being able to take much more control over their own healthcare. Across Lincolnshire, we have supported all of our GP practices to move to digital telephone systems, again, that has proved particularly beneficial in terms of patients being able to utilise different functions rather than having to hold for long periods of time. There's more work to do in terms of how those are used and again, how we support people to know how best to use them but it's definitely improved access. This year's plan includes a specific target to have online consultation tools open during the opening hours from 8 o'clock till 6.30 and that's something we've talked about previously in committee about how beneficial online consultations tools are but the frustration of I've gone on at 10 o'clock and it's already closed, so by October practices will have to have that open all the time. We're very aware of the need to develop the general practice workforce and again, Dr Reed has highlighted a number of the staff working in general practice are over the age of 55, so this is about how do we create an environment where Lincolnshire's a really positive place to come and work in general practice. I'm pleased to say that over the last few years, we've got 18% more full-time equivalent posts in Lincolnshire and our primary care people team, working again with colleagues from the LMC and from the Lincolnshire Training Hub, have really progressed some very innovative initiatives to develop local roles and that has enabled us to increasingly utilise, it's a very unusual title but, the additional roles reimbursement scheme, so we call it the R scheme, which enables primary care networks to recruit a range of clinicians to work and complement primary care. When that was first introduced, it was quite restrictive but over the years and certainly in this, the new contract for this year, the restrictions have been released, so those primary care networks are much more free to think about what it is they need in their local areas. Colleagues in primary care tell me the introduction of things like clinical pharmacists have really transformed how they're working and similarly, introduction of first contact practitioners, which enables you to go directly to a physio for an assessment as opposed to a GP, have again transformed some of the services. The introduction of a number of new roles such as social prescribing and health coaches are about extending the primary care MDT to look at the whole person, that is the essence of general practice but I think some of these new roles are quite complimentary. One of the questions we're often asked when we come to committee is about do not attend, Lincolnshire is very good in terms of do not attend, we have about 3.2% of people didn't attend appointments, obviously 3.2% I would say is too high because that's missed an opportunity for other patients but compared with the national, that rate is much lower and again, that's very positive in terms of members of the public taking responsibility to either attend or cancel appointment but also it's been facilitated by GP practices introducing things like text reminders. Estates is an area that we've often talked about, there are 114 locations, so whilst we have 81 practices, there are 114 locations, some of those are main practice sites and others are branches. Premises are funded for general practice, they are the only primary care group where we do do the rent reimbursement and we support practices as far as we can in terms of developing facilities. We're pleased to announce that we have just secured 1.3 million pounds in terms of additional capital funding, which will look at how we can improve existing infrastructure and increase the capacity for workforce. If there's increased demand, you need increased workforce, you need increased capacity. And our approach going forward is very much linked to neighbourhood health, which is the third element of the national plan, which is very much about how do we move services from hospital to community and increasingly, what we want to do is encourage general practice and other community services to work alongside each other in facilities. The Care Quality Commission are an independent regulator who come and provide assurance of the quality of services across the county, we have good services across Lincolnshire and I've included the details in the report, there are ongoing CQC assessments and so that figure changes all the time. Locally within the primary care team, we've introduced a proactive support for practices called Qs and that enables us to work with teams for them to proactively look at how they're working and improve areas in terms of service provision. The framework is developed on the CQC but it is not a CQC assessment, this is about helping practices themselves. We're very pleased that Lincolnshire was one of seven ICBs to be invited to participate in a national pilot with the NHS and the pilot is looking at understanding the gap between demand and capacity in GP practices and what makes a difference in terms of that. We've got three PCNs in that, Lincolnshire Health Partnership, which is in the Lincoln City area, Apex and Imp who are just outside Lincoln, those three PCNs are each independently testing new ways of working and already we've got interesting insights from that. They're enabled to do that because they've had additional financial investment and a freedom to target that funding to reflect their population needs, so there's some very positive learning in there. Local enhanced services are an additional service that practices can choose to provide or not, there are enhanced services that are commissioned from a national perspective, so advice and guidance was something that was introduced this year on the national contract and I believe we've got 100% of our practices that have signed up to do that, which is exceptionally positive and then there are local services that the ICB initiated, commissioned. Those hadn't been reviewed for a very long time, we initiated a review in October last year, that review is ongoing, as we are aware that there was variation across the county, GP practices had highlighted that some of the areas were substantially underfunded and therefore going into this financial year, we have provided additional funding particularly for treatment room and for lobotomy services and going forward, we will be working with colleagues in primary care and the community to look at what services are best delivered in... in general practice and hopefully securing GP support for doing that. Where they don't, we look to commission alternatives, although we appreciate for patients, they may not be as convenient, but we do want to make sure they have access. And then other services that are better commissioned on a larger footprint, either because of the volume or the competence or the skill that's required. In terms of where we are, the team are focused on, obviously, the continued support of general practice across the county. And that's an ongoing sort of like relationship. Things can change very quickly in general practice. And the primary care team try to respond to support people. In terms of the operating plan, so I'm sure you've heard this morning about the NHS has an operating plan. Within that, there were some specific elements for general practice that included the elements highlighted in the GP contract that was negotiated nationally that I've set out. From our perspective, our focus remains very much on improving patient access and making sure that that is relevant for the patient need. And finally, just to bring all of that together, we're very conscious that general practice is one of the foundation stones of the NHS. It's very, very important. So we are midway in developing a local Lincolnshire GP strategy, which will really look at how do we support general practice across Lincolnshire. And picking up Dr Markinson Saunders, Jill Markinson Saunders' comment earlier about that being representative of the levels of need in a different area. So it's sensitive to patient need. And also, how do we facilitate general practice working as a key stakeholder partner in the development of neighbourhood health, which is one of the government's priorities? So that's slightly longer than normal, councillor Cleaver, but hopefully provides a good overview of where we are in the county.
Thank you for that. Dr Baker, would you like to introduce yours? Thank you.
Thanks, Chair. Thanks, committee. So, good morning, committee. For those of you who've not met before, Dr Reed Baker, GP, Medical Director of Lincolnshire LMC, and incoming GPC England Representative, Lincolnshire, North Lincolnshire and East Yorkshire. It is fantastic to be back again today to talk to you about GP provision, both faces I've seen before and new faces. So we're looking forward to some really good discussion, hopefully today. Sarah Jane's given a really comprehensive outline of GP provision. So I'm not going to repeat that framework for you. So we've got plenty of time for good discussion, as I said. So as statutory representatives of general practice in Lincolnshire, Lincolnshire LMC advocates for general practice. We recognise and we champion the dedication of our exceptional teams in the face of ongoing and escalating challenges. And like you and our Lincolnshire population, we want high-quality, accessible, flourishing general practice at local GP surgeries that can optimise all of our health from cradle to grave. So while our GP colleagues unequivocally want this, there are many challenges. And we've talked about some of them already, and they're highlighted in the report. So we must work together, all of us, to try and reach that for the future of our population. So the report I submitted, as well as Sarah Jane and Nick, talks about that provision and challenge for general practice. I particularly like to draw your attention to the document I attached to value of GP, or AGP rather, in the report. In case you haven't had a chance to look at it in advance, it really highlights why we need to be supporting general practice, both locally and nationally. So we continue in general practice to provide sustained increased numbers of appointments. Sarah Jane's talked about that. And through a wide range of access points and modalities, each one hopefully suiting people for their particular needs. On average, the data would suggest around sixty percent of people in Lincolnshire see their GP practice for an appointment every month. So circa four hundred and seventy thousand people on the last data. And we're continually, despite that, reviewing processes and seek to improve not only the services we provide, but also those access points and the team that deliver those within practices. And that's based partly on national as well as local initiatives. But of course, we want to provide more. Our public want more. You guys want more, I'm sure. But we need more invested in general practice. And I use that word across a whole range of interpretations of invested, because we need that to become a reality. So we know financial investment in general practice and primary care yields roughly a fourteen-fold increase in GDP. That sounds pretty sensible to me if we can do that. And we know that investment in general practice reduces hospital admissions and ambulance transportation. And again, that's outlined in the documents I've referred to already. So it all sounds like it should be working really, really well in that case. But unfortunately, we're in the midst of a workforce crisis in general practice. And that word maybe feels like it's overused at times, but it really is a paradox in general practice at the moment. So we know roughly from a BMA survey from not long ago that about fifty percent of GPs would like to work more, but they can't find more work. We know that fifteen percent of GPs can't find any work at all. Seventy-one percent of GPs say their work is stressful or extremely stressful. And forty-two percent say they probably won't be working in general practice in five years' time. So they are GPs that could be providing appointments, high quality, continuity of care for you, your family and everyone across Lincolnshire. So we also have practices closing or reducing services due to viability of those services or the practice. And as we all know, we have secondary care waiting lists that are huge, despite lots of work and investment into trying to address that for our population. And we know that some of that activity could be carried out in general practice. And Sarah Jane's already talked about that shift into community. And we would welcome that with open arms in general practice. We're very dynamic. We're very efficient, probably to our own detriment to some degree, because we're in the situation we're at at the moment. But we want to shift that care closer to home, where patients want it in the community. And we need the right investment and infrastructure to support that. Remember, again, talking a little bit earlier about admissions. So a regular GP, if you see a regular GP, you'll reduce hospital admissions by about twenty percent. And a GP appointment costs around fifty-six pounds for everything that's involved, not just sitting in front of your GP, of course. Whereas the lowest element of treatment and investigation, you might get a UTC, urgent treatment centre, would be about ninety-one pounds. So we're at least double as financially efficient as some other sectors. And of course, we want to produce some of that activity and move some of that activity in general practice if it's resourced and sustained, because then we can relieve pressure on our colleagues in those urgent treatment centres, A and Es, and through the inpatient wards in the hospital, and hopefully help with patient flow. As I alluded to in my report, we unfortunately have an ICB that are facing increased challenges, like all ICBs are now after recent national directives. And that causes challenges for our Lincolnshire population and our, you know, our hard-working ICB team as well. So none of this should be where we are. We all need a brighter future. I'm a very optimistic individual. So, you know, despite all the challenges nationally, I want everything to be better for all of us. But in general practice terms, let's just put it like this. We're doing twenty percent more activity with about twenty percent real terms less funding from about eight, nine years ago. And we have about twenty percent fewer practices. While a new GP contract that was announced for twenty-five, twenty-six is a step in the right direction, there is some further investment, as outlined in the reports. And Secretary of State West Streeting has promised a new substantive GP contract within this parliament. This is a pivotal moment for general practice, our wider NHS and our population. Because if we have a flourishing general practice, and therefore a wider NHS, we could really make a difference for our Lincolnshire and our national populations. Or do we continue with the old way of doing things and invest elsewhere in a system where we don't see that same efficiency? So let's hope. The imminent spending review and the NHS ten-year plan are keenly anticipated by everyone, and particularly general practice at the moment, to see what the NHS trajectory for us all is. So I'll leave it at that. It'd be great to have some discussion. But once again, thanks for having me. And hopefully, my report wasn't too long for you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr Baker. And thank you for being so succinct. That was appreciated. So we have lots of time for questions. So I'm now going to invite members to ask questions about the two reports and about the provision of GP services in Lincolnshire generally. Please indicate to me or to the Vice Chairman if you wish to speak. I would ask members to keep their initial questions short and to the point, so that we have plenty of time for follow-up questions and plenty of time for everyone who wishes to take part to do so, please. So I have councillor Morgan first, and then have councillor Kendrick.
I'm councillor Smith.
Thank you. And thank you very much for your very comprehensive report and all the work that you're all doing beavering away behind in your offices. I know previously it was staggered to hear how many, I think it was over forty different appointments and pieces of work you're doing per day. I mean, I think a lot of people just have no idea how much work you actually do, to be honest with you. I have never forgot that figure. Do you feel at the moment, as the government's reviewing its strategic plans to move to more to care in the community, of course, you are the front line of that work? Do you feel though we are in a situation where we might be facing an either-or refunding, when actually during transition, we actually need to be funding both? You need more investment in order to be ready? And we need to continue the investment in the secondary services that you describe? What's your feeling about that?
Thanks. Great question. And yes, we do do a lot of activity, as you rightly said. And I think that's something we would really like to get across more and more and more. I think I said it at committee previously. I once totted up all the tiny little bits of work I did, as well as the actual appointments that you come and see me in, including signing prescriptions, which was a significant part of it. Around a hundred and fifty of it was signing prescriptions in one day. Well, the total amount of elements of work was five hundred and fifty-five for that one day. Obviously, the vast majority of that was not face-to-face with the patients. In terms of the funding, I think it is a crucial, crucial point. And we've talked about this double running that would potentially be needed. Because the last thing we want to do is destabilise acutely our secondary care services, because they will need a period of transition as well. So that will be a cost implication, not just obviously nationally, but for Lincolnshire as well, if that was the route taken. But there's been pilots around shifting some of that care into communities. So we had Women's Health Hubs, for example, to try and help with the waiting lists in secondary care by GPs with special interests or additional training in women's health, doing clinics in the community and taking people off the waiting list for secondary care. So initiatives like that, with some funding attached to them, can start that shift. But you're quite right, there is a risk that we either or if we don't double run.
Sarah Jane, would you come in?
Yes. Thank you, councillor Morgan. It is, I suppose, when you look at it in a black and white, absolutely, as you make change, you need to sort of like double run. I think that some of the work that we're doing and we're being challenged to do, both by the government and the general population, is actually look at how do we use the funding that we have today? And are we utilising that in the most effective way? And that does mean that we have to enter in some, sometimes quite difficult conversations about whether services are best meeting clinical need. And I think if we can start to have that conversation and work with clinicians and the general public, and we've got some great examples recently of, by doing that, actually, we've identified that we could be more efficient. And we can therefore release the funding that enables us to invest in the future direction. So I don't think this is just always about additional funding. I think there is, we do need to recognise that there are times when things are in place that actually no longer meet clinical need, and therefore we need to redesign. And that releases funding to enable us to invest elsewhere. I don't think it's an either-or, but I think that we do need to be open to things that are going to change. And one of the things that I highlighted in the report is that a number of practices have embraced total triage, which we facilitated by funding digital tools, not for everybody. But that has made a real difference in terms of them looking at how they're working. So I think it's not an either-or. But obviously, for some of the bigger changes, yes, we will need to think about how do we double run.
Thank you. Councillor Kendrick?
Sorry, councillor Cleaver. I think Nick.
Sorry, sorry, Nick. Apologies.
No, no problem at all. I just wanted to build on what Sarah Jane said. I think it's a really good point. I won't repeat what's been said by Dr Baker and Sarah Jane. But one of the other things we're looking at, and it's come up through the GP pilots, is how we share resources across the wider health system. So how do we look at coordinating primary care, community service, and some secondary care specialist services too? So there are some efficiencies, I think, that we will be looking at through that integration of care and better meeting population need. So I think it's just an important point to think about that kind of integration, how we move resources that we have around the system.
Thank you. Councillor Kendrick, sorry.
Thank you, chairman. I've got a number of questions, but I'll cut them down to two, because to give time for other people to ask questions. I accept what you say, Sarah, as regards DNAs. But the GP practices in my division actually approached me to help maybe get some more publicity about DNAs, because they have on average sixty-four DNAs a month, which works out about just over three a day, people not turning up for appointments. So I'm just wondering what more could be done in county-wide publicity to make people aware that, you know, DNAs are cutting other people out of actually getting to see a GP. And the second one is, on the CQC reports, I noticed, and I may have missed it, because you did talk about those, so I apologise if I missed it. But I know some of them are sort of like nine years old, some of the CQ inspections. I'm just wondering, is this going to be ramped up in so much as bringing it up to date? Because obviously, nine years, a lot can change in a GP practice over nine years. Thanks, chairman.
Mick, thank you.
Thank you. Absolutely. So just taking the first point around DNAs. We do work with practices where DNAs are an issue. And certainly, something we'll be looking to do is have routine comms campaigns where we're reminding patients that actually it's really important, it's a valuable resource. Please make best use of it and help others make best use of it. So don't, you know, if you've got an appointment, do turn up to it. So that'll be part of our ongoing comms campaigns. We've got practices in the county that have been really proactive in terms of their communication to patients themselves. So one practice on the website will have information available around how many appointments they've offered, how many have been attended, and how many DNAs they have. So again, they're just reinforcing that. So we do work with practices around that. So I think that's something we want to continue with, really just to make best use of that. There'll always be a level of DNAs, but we really want to reduce that down to as little as possible. In terms of CQC, coming on to your second point, absolutely. Some of them happened a long, long time ago, and things will have changed for those practices. Sarah Jane mentioned in the report around the Qs. So it's a quality early warning score system. Basically, that's an assessment that our quality team carry out with practices. And it's aligned to the CQC inspection framework. So what they do is they go in, they run through that with the practice and identify areas where the practice could improve. So that's really important in terms of preparing practices for coming inspections. And by mapping it to the inspection framework, we can really focus in on those areas we know CQC will pick up on. So we're working with practices to proactively support them, address any issues before there's an inspection. The quality team have gone round, I think they've got round to all practices or nearly all practices now. So we're in a really good position and kind of have a good up-to-date view of where practices are. You're right, though, CQC are going to be ramping up the inspection regime again. So we're expecting, they're kind of slightly limited by their capacity themselves, but we are expected to see more inspections in the near future. So we do need to prepare for that.
Thanks very much for that. I think it's just the fact that CQC inspection is also like a public-facing thing and that members of the public, when they're scanning through practices, they say, oh, they haven't been looked at for. I know they won't be aware that you're doing your quality thing. But from a sort of public point of view, they'll look and see, oh, when did they last have a CQC inspection? Oh, you know, it's nine years ago. But I accept what you say, that there's work going on behind the scenes that the public may not be aware of. Thanks very much.
Dr Baker, you wanted to come in there quickly?
Yeah, just briefly, on the CQC point particularly. Like the ICB, the LMC provide CQC support for practices. So that's not just in the run-up to their inspection once it's announced, but that's an offer to all practices at all times. And we have one colleague who, the vast majority of their work within the LMC is supporting practices in that work. So trying to keep them up to date with a lot of changes. Because you're right, in nine years, a lot will have changed. Not only within the practice in terms of how it operates, but also in terms of regulations and what they need to be doing. So they are regularly given opportunity to do that, and a lot of them take us up on it. And that means that they're slowly doing that work to move towards where we would all hope that they would be. That's obviously saying a lot has changed in terms of the challenges on general practice in the last nine years. I can speak personally that we'd not been inspected for a long time in the practice I've been at doing until very recently. And we've been inspected. It was extremely robust in every aspect. So what I can say is when they are going in, they are checking things robustly. So hopefully, that gives confidence to patients.
Thank you. I have councillor Smith next, please.
Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, chairman. My question is about the new booking systems at GP practices. I have quite a few older residents that have been in contact, they find it quite confusing, and they don't seem to get, when they get through, they're not understood with their problems, and it sort of frightens them a bit. Is there a general facility where they can go to get training? I mean, do the GP practice set that up?
There isn't a sort of, we have in the past, with actually colleagues in Healthwatch, we have ran sort of like courses and things where people can go and familiarise themselves in terms of how to use some of the online tool. I don't think there's anything running at the moment, but one of the things that we will look at is whether that's something that would be beneficial, given that it keeps changing. The majority of practices, and I'm always cautious to say the majority, if a patient rings up, they will support them and do it for them. So where practices use online tools to support the total triage, often if a patient rings up, the care navigator will put the information in for them. So I would encourage people to talk to their practice if they're struggling, because they will be able to give them the best advice that's meaningful for them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have councillor Martin then, sorry, sorry.
Sorry, thank you. Just to add, some practices, all practices have patient participation groups, those are groups of patients who work with the practice and provide feedback and support to the practice and give the patient perspective. Some practice patient participation groups will support other patients with accessing online consultation tools as well. So it depends on the practice, but again, it's always worth checking with the practice to see if the patient participation group will support people.
Thank you. I now have councillor Martin and councillor Lee, please.
Thank you, chairman. Okay, as you know, Lincolnshire is obviously a growing county. We've got a lot of new housing developments and an awful lot more people coming to the county over the next twenty, thirty years. The reference here to capital investment states that section 106 monies, which is obviously money we get from developers and such like, are a key and a blurb for general practice schemes. I was just wondering, do you find the S106 monies are restricted, restrict the way you can do things? Do they hinder GP services? And what, if anything, would you like to see changed with that? And is there anything we're actually working towards to try and improve the way you can get access to that money? Because there is going to be quite a lot of it there, I would imagine. And a second question, it's all to do with the patient journey and the way patients come into the system. How do you find out from A&amp;Es and UTCs and such like, how many patients are coming to them without going to the GP, because they find the GP system is hard to get into, they can't access the GP immediately, you know, these online systems can be quite prohibitive to some people? So how do you know how many patients are actually just skipping the GP service altogether, going straight into the A&amp;Es, you know, clogging up the system that way? And on that note, is there a way to tell how many of your DNAs actually just went of going straight to A&amp;E? Thank you.
Thank you for those questions. In terms of section 106 funding, I don't think the experience is particularly restrictive or problematic. I think sometimes the thresholds that developers have to reach before the funding is released means there's a kind of a delay from putting in the application and then receiving the funding. Some of the other issues are really just around getting the work done as well, but that's more of a practical issue. I think we'd be very keen to work with local authority colleagues around the section 106 process, and if there's anything we can do to improve that, I'd be really happy to have that conversation. But I think it kind of broadly is what it is, and I think it is really supportive and helpful to get that funding coming through to GP practices. I know GP practices with support from the ICB make really good use of that funding, just to increase and improve premises and cope with that additional demand that comes through. I think if there are any additional flexibilities around section 106 funding, that would be useful too, but I think, as I said, I'd be really happy to have that conversation with colleagues in local authorities. In terms of A&amp;E, we do know that patients will sometimes choose to go to an urgent care setting to receive care. Sometimes that's to do with having trouble accessing another service at GP practice, for example. Sometimes it's a patient choice because it's convenient. We don't always get data on that purely because when people attend an urgent care setting, they aren't always, the urgent care colleagues aren't always able to ask you, did you go and see your GP first? Occasionally, that conversation happens, but not all the time, so the data, I guess, that we do get isn't really robust and probably doesn't give the full picture. We do work with colleagues within secondary care and within the urgent care teams in the ICB to understand whether there are pressures on urgent care settings due to patients attending, where they could have gone to the GP or tried to go to the GP. Occasionally, we'll do kind of deep dives into particular issues and try and pick that up, and if there's something we can do to support a practice around that, we will do so. So we do keep an eye on that. One of the things that we are doing this year is developing the data sets that help us understand activity, either activity at GP practice or where that activity is diverted elsewhere. And Sarah Jane mentioned that there's going to be a focus on looking at variation across practices this year. One of the things we'll be looking at is are patients going to hospital when they could have gone to the GP instead, and if we can support the practice. And again, there's a comms issue as well, making sure that we're supporting patients to make the right choice about where to attend, we'll look at that. But again, supporting the practice and supporting patients to go to the right place, that is going to be a focus for this year. Yeah, sorry.
And just linking back to the fact that we're very fortunate in terms of the NHS pilot, one of the areas that one of the PCNs, so Lincoln Health Partnership, are looking at is exactly that question in terms of are their patients going straight to the UTC, which is quite local in terms of Lincoln, as opposed to coming to the GP practice. And they've been working with colleagues in the UTCs to actually understand, and if possible, intercept patients, to understand why they have gone, and they're looking at how they might test new ways of working to reduce that demand. Obviously, as Nick's alluded to, often people go because it's convenient for them, but what we're really keen to do is understand whether it is about convenience, or actually whether it was a gap in service at the practice. Because for the majority of people, and just picking up the issue about continuity of care, clearly, having a constant relationship with the GP practice enables that much stronger holistic. So we would encourage people to go back to their practices rather than use urgent care, but the pilot will give us some really helpful insights.
Thank you, Dr Reed.
Thanks. Trying not to go over the same points. From a GP practice perspective, in terms of section 106, as you were questioning, I think the thresholds are really, really a challenge. And again, I'm just going back to my practice, so there was a 106 application put in by us ten years ago, and a certain level of funding was associated with that. Due to the building process and the occupancy rates, that threshold was not reached for an awful long time. The original funding changes significantly in terms of value to the practice, in terms of improvements that can be made at that point. The challenge is, previously, we needed more GPs and nurses etcetera in practices, and the funding for 106 does not allow you to employ more people. But now we have, need more people and more estates, so even with the estates, we may be challenged despite the additionality of our ARRs colleagues. So I think that change in the thresholds, how that then flows through, would be really useful, and it'd be ideal if we could use it on, and it was recurrent funding, of course, so then we could have more staff, but that's clearly not the way 106 is going to function. In terms of your question around ED and urgent treatment centres, yes, I think convenience is an element of it. We could see clearly in the data, people who live near ED or UTC are more likely to use it, and those practices, therefore, their patients are more likely to use it. It can be an access thing, or a lack of workforce availability in general practice, but again, some patients, you know, tell me directly, sometimes they will go there because, well, they know they can get their blood test and ECG and a chest X-ray there and then, rather than me requesting it. And they are a small minority of patients, of course, but again, it's that convenience. We live in a society where we want everything now. I think I've said it again previously in committee here, I now expect my Amazon Prime delivery, ideally, it should be the minute I click the button, and it isn't, and that's just the way we've changed as a society, isn't it? But we need the infrastructure and the services that can actually robustly support that. The other thing I would just say about it, which has just slipped my mind for a second, which is really annoying, forgive me, I might have to return to that point, because I've forgotten it, apologies.
Thank you, Dr Baker. Councillor Martin, you want to come back? Okay.
Thank you, chair. First of all, thanks for a really good report, it's very thorough. I'm going to pinch a spare one and put it in our group room, so that my colleagues who aren't on this committee can read it, it's excellent. I've got a couple of questions. First of all, do all GPs, should they all be providing well-women clinics? I moved GPs a couple of years ago, and they're very good where I go, and they've got triage, we've got a physio, they utilise digital. But when I asked, because obviously the founding principle, one of the founding principles of the NHS was that you prevent rather than treat ill health, we've never quite got there, have we yet, but we will in the end. If you don't have well-women clinics, I mean, I'm a former nurse, I know the questions to ask and how to be pushy, but if you don't have those clinics, you know, how do you detect those conditions ahead of them becoming something that actually is sort of important? And the second question, it's about the services to, the access to specialist service, and I think, I'm thinking here primarily about epilepsy. My son has epilepsy, it's quite complex why he's got it and what he's got. But I found that if you need to contact someone after a seizure, it can take quite some time to get to epilepsy nurses and get that support, and you don't want to be going to A&amp;E or don't need to go to A&amp;E. So is that variable with different specialist support services? For instance, it might be good with epilepsy, but it might not be good, but it might be better with diabetes or heart failure or whatever. But I just wonder about that, that the support services, the really specialised stuff, how good's the link with a GP? Because that's always your first port of call, isn't it?
Dr Baker?
Thank you. So if we go back to contracts, that's the basic of where all GP practices work from. So it's not explicitly stated within the contract, but we provide a range of care for people from craters grave, as I've already said, and that includes periods of their life, you know, for women and for men that need, might be encouraged to have certain monitoring throughout their lifetime, and national screening programmes, for example. What practices do offer generally and can sign up to, it's an enhanced service, we can sign up to, is NHS health checks. So patients are eligible every five years for an NHS health check, so that covers a wide range of things in terms of prevention, as you said, in terms of checking things like for diabetes, or your cholesterol, or for thyroid disease. And as part of that, usually there'll be a chat, depending on a gentleman or a lady, in terms of some of the associated things we might find that they have health challenges with or questions with throughout their life. So it very much depends, everyone deploys it slightly differently, and people do, or practices do generally advertise those and try and encourage patients to sign up for them. And then some practices have an additional services, because, you know, my practice, for example, had a GP who was previously an obstetrics and gynaecology registrar, so she's very keen on women's health, and would actively be bringing people in to discuss that with them, because clearly it's a really important part of health and wellbeing for our population. So it varies a little bit, but they're some of the basic things that we can offer.
And of course, across the county, in fact, Lincolnshire's been highlighted as an exemplar in terms of the women's health services that we're looking to develop. Although the original concept was about developing hubs, actually, the team are working on a slightly different model, which I think is probably more suitable to a rural and coastal community, so lots of focus in that area that complements general practice services. In terms of the specialist services, currently, there is a variation in terms of the different specialties, but with the development of neighbourhood health, colleagues in our acute trust and community trust are looking at how they, we use the term left shift, so how they develop the specialist services in the communities, so that it's easier for patients to access those specialists without having to go through a specialist referral and all of those things. There will be variation in terms of the nature of the service. Diabetes, for example, there are a lot of diabetes specialist nurses in the community, similarly with heart failure. So I think over the next five years, you will start to see greater and greater development. And going back to continuity of care, that relationship between general practice and specialists is something that we're increasingly trying to harness. And in the primary care access recovery plan that we've been working on, and the work that we continue to do, there's a lot of conversation or requirements around interface. And interface isn't just about the doctor in the hospital writing the fit note or whatever, it is about how do you bring these teams together, and how do they develop services that work for patients by them working closer together.
Thank you. And have councillor Currie next, please.
Thank you, chair. I've got two questions. First of all, you were talking about the uptick, increase in engagement with pharmacy first, and how it's been very substantial. Are you anticipating that figure to continue to rise, or will it plateau? And if you're going, if it's going to plateau or drop off, like a lot of new services often do, what measures are you planning to take to sustain that going forward, if it is so beneficial? And secondly, the increase of GP appointments, are you seeing any patterns across the county with where the most number of appointments are, the most number of appointments being needed but aren't being met are? And is that linked to any other markers, for example, free school meals, or general areas of deprivation? And maybe you've started to answer this possibly with councillor Lee's question, but what scope is there to work with other partners, potentially those not in the NHS, to help support managing those patterns of need? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Dr Baker, could you just switch your microphone off? Thank you. Dr Baker, thank you.
Just to pick up your point around pharmacy first, we've been doing a lot of work on developing it, and there's developing the relationship between GPs, pharmacies, and also the public, of course, because we want to make the public aware of what pharmacies now are offering. We expect that to continue, so we're looking to support increasing the activity through the pharmacy first services. I think what we potentially see, and this is just me speculating a little bit, we'll potentially see a broadening of the scope of services that pharmacies are able to offer in the future. At the moment, it's around six particular conditions, blood pressure and oral contraception. One of the, I guess, one of the limiting factors is pharmacy capacity to be able to provide those services well. In terms of estate, we talked about GP estate, this applies to pharmacies as well, and they're not often set up for consultations, but also having the workforce that can deliver that too. So again, that's something we're working with the local pharmaceutical committee and other colleagues to expand that as well. So just to come back to your question, I expect to see that expand. There are a few rate-limiting factors we're working on with colleagues around that, but I think it's something that's here to stay now, and I'd like to see it increased in terms of usage.
And then in terms of your second question, it's quite interesting in terms of the demand for appointments. There is clearly a clinical need in areas where we have populations, often there is an association with the markers that you've talked about in terms of the demographics of an area. And there is a requirement to meet that capacity. So again, just talking about the East Coast, for example, we know we've got a significant portion of people living on the East Coast with long-term conditions, who have an ongoing requirement for regular access to support them maintaining those conditions. So there is a level of demand. Interestingly, sometimes the local community don't access the services in terms of that proactive, and they wait until they're ill, so that can mask the demand, if you like. But increasingly in those areas, we would want to encourage people to, as we've just talked about with health checks and things like that, take those appointments. In other areas, where there isn't necessarily the same level of clinical demand in terms of illness, you can still you can still see equal levels of demand on the practice. And I think that sometimes makes it very difficult to compare apples and pears because they're different populations and different needs and different expectations. So a lot of the work we do with practices is around them understanding their population and how they organise their services. And we're very lucky in Lincolnshire, we do, we've worked very hard over the last couple of years in terms of, we call it a population health management dataset. And that gives us really good visibility of where the need is and how we can work with practices to develop those services. There are some constraints in some of those more deprived areas in terms of recruitment of clinicians. And that can often be the constraint in terms of capacity rather than the desire to meet patient need. But it's quite a complicated picture and a lot of the time that we spend in the ICB is working with practices and primary care networks to understand their population and then think about how they deliver their services to meet that need.
Dr Ree, thank you.
Thank you. I have the risk here of going down various rabbit holes and not articulating what I want to articulate because there's so many strands to your questions, which were brilliant. Thank you. In terms, so apologies in advance if I do. So pharmacy first, I think we've got a really good relationship with our colleagues in community pharmacy here in Lincolnshire. I work with my contemporaries in the local pharmacy committee quite closely. And we know they're working really, really hard and they were here at the last committee to talk about the challenges that they face. But, you know, I think they've, when I speak to them, they've enjoyed embracing pharmacy first. There have been a lot of challenges and they face a lot of similar challenges to us in terms of workforce, estates, capacity. And they're trying to do all their usual community pharmacy work as well. And the data looks good, you know, it's positive, that relationship is there. Some of the digital and information flow has been, there's been some teething problems, let's say, but hopefully we're getting towards those being rectified. I think the challenge is that they are, and I'm going to paraphrase a colleague, they're kind of ticking along community pharmacy at the moment. They need more like we do. There was an independent government survey done on how much it costs to run community pharmacy and it came out as £5 billion. And so the funding for this year is £3 billion. So they are going to struggle to take more on unless we sustainably and robustly support it to increase activity levels. In terms of GP appointments, I think Sarah Jane has particularly talked about that. And the workforce capacity is the primary issue as well as the clinical need, as she says. And I think the challenge around clinical capacity, and we talked about the number of appointments people do, all the items of work, as I talked about earlier, is that balance between access and safety. The last thing we want to do is give too many appointments and you be the last person at the end of 50, 100 patients and something go wrong for you at the end of the day. So I guess it's how we make it work for those areas and that's the population health management. But every practice is slightly different and that's what makes it complex, both for us supporting as the LMC and for the ICB.
Thank you. Councillor Glacy.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Thank you very much for a very detailed report. It was just a quick question really. On the, Sarah Jane, on the non-attended appointments, the figures you've given today, when were they last updated? Was that actually up to date? Oh, okay, that's fine. Thank you.
And I now have councillor Morgan and then councillor Mackinson Saunders, please.
Thank you. Yeah, I didn't follow up to my original question, so just going back, putting a more strategic thinking cap on. Do you feel there could be a risk if we don't run two things together? The building up of our GP practices and support with care in the community? And we start running down the investment in our secondary provision, hospital beds, et cetera? Maybe even acute care, that we are at risk then of putting people at risk within the community? Because we just don't have enough resources to support them. I'm concerned about this in particular because I have got feedback from people working on the frontline in that area that there are risks, there are people now who are falling through the necks and that deeply concerns me. And I just wonder how we track, even now, that we make sure every patient, especially those who could be particularly vulnerable, maybe with early onset dementia or something like that, released from hospital, are actually being picked up all the way through and being given the support they need through the relevant partners in the community. Then, and a completely different question, just picking up the point about the section 106. I think you touched on something, Dr Baker, regarding the fact that actually it's more, you can't ask the staff. It's, to me, that's a huge issue because I know that we're being told within the planning regime that the section 106 funding will in effect deliver that key healthcare service on, for example, a brand new estate, maybe thousands of new houses, thousands of new people. But what we're getting the feeling actually in reality, we might get a building, but there's no guarantee we'll get a GP in there. Am I right here? Or how do we get, how do we address that issue?
Thank you.
No, I was nodding away. That is the challenge with 106. So, and it sets an expectation as well, you know. So when I followed the social media in our local area around 106, there wasn't that understanding that it wouldn't bring in new GPs, nurses and other staff within the practice. And I use the word battle and I don't mean it in the sense of the word, but trying to get that narrative over that actually, yes, you will maybe have a new room, clinical room or something like that, but not necessarily want to go in it. I guess the other challenge is if 106 was allowed to be for staff and it's non-recurrent, you then put an additional financial burden on the practice for the following year, for example. They've employed that staff member for a year or however long the funding lasts for. And then either the population loses that member of staff or there's another test for financial viability on the practice. But yes, ideally it would deliver both because that's the aspirations we need to develop our local services.
I'll start with the section 106. The section 106 is very much around the capital, so, and I can't see that changing. The, I think the reality of the challenge is that GP practices will receive funding for people who register with them. So if I move into a house today and I go and register with a GP practice, every quarter, the funding that is allocated to that practice is reset. So they would get the funding associated to that person moving in and registering with that practice. Obviously, the critical bit is that if you've got 100 people moving in and you get the funding equivalent to 100 people as independent businesses, that may not be sufficient for them to employ another GP. And that's the, I suppose, the challenge facing our GP practices. And it is one of their strengths in terms of they are very flexible and dynamic in terms of how they look at their workforce and how they redesign that. Because in some areas of the county, we're aware that new housing developments will actually change the population profile. So practices are very flexible and very responsive. But as in any business, there is a point where it's a step change. And 100 people moving in is probably insufficient to equate to another GP. And I think that is some of the complexity of the funding arrangements. But a practice would get revenue funding as soon as a patient is registered with them.
May I just ask, do you have a trigger, a point where you say this is enough funding? Is there any sort of benchmark?
What, in terms of the revenue funding?
Yes.
So the revenue funding, and there is lots of debate about whether the formula is right or wrong. There is a national Carhill formula that is used to determine the level of funding that goes to GP practices. And that is calculated on their raw list, but also on their weighted, so on the population demographic. So for example, that one of the practices in Lincoln that has a much younger population wouldn't get the same level of funding as a practice somewhere else that's got a much older population. And that's not just to do with the weighted population, but it will also be for other sources of funding that practices can claim for doing proactive care and things like that. So it's a really, really complex picture, but it's a national, for general practice, it is a national formula. In terms of the second question that you asked in relation to the development of services. It's, again, it's a very complicated picture when you look across the county in terms of the development of services. I think Nick made the point earlier on that as an integrated care board, one of our primary focuses has been about how do you integrate care? How do you bring different clinical teams together to work together? Because actually that drives not only better care but increased efficiency. When we're looking at developing community services, we don't literally go, right, today we're doing it this way, tomorrow we're doing it a different way. We don't flick a switch in that way. We tend to work in a couple of areas very closely with the teams on the ground and work through. I describe it as a proof of concept, other people describe it as a pilot. So that those teams on the ground are really close to what is happening all of the time. And we can get the visibility from that of where there are issues and we can respond very quickly. So in the majority of instances, we would pick up if there is a gap. And certainly there's a lot of work that goes on. So if, talking about discharge from hospital, which is one of the areas. All of our colleagues, so primary care, the hospital, the ambulance trust, social care, we all meet together and we look at what's happening. We look at a lot of the data and that helps us constantly look at, are there new gaps? Are there new issues? What are those issues? What are the actions we need to take to mitigate them? So if we are doing any major change, we're very structured in how we do that. That doesn't mean things don't happen, but hopefully because you've got that clear project oversight, you pick it up. And we're constantly reviewing how things work. So hopefully that just provides a bit of reassurance. It's not a just flick a switch and we change everything. If we're going to do a major, major change, it tends to be in a couple of areas and all the partners are involved in that and the public.
Thank you, Dr Baker. You wanted to quickly come in, I think.
Yeah, apologies. Hold on. Am I on or are you sorry? Apologies, anyone who knows me, I like looking at figures and numbers and it helps me conceptualise things. In terms of your second point around the funding and what might be needed, I think Sarah Jane's quite right, Carhill formula, there's a lot of national discussion about that formula and what a new formula might look like and what it needs to take into account because populations have changed since it was devised many, many years ago. But that's a very complex process, but it is, you know, it's happening nationally in terms of conversation. But if we put that formula to aside for one second, they are last year's figures. But I think the projection was for a general practice service we would all aspire to, you would be looking at about 14.5% of the total NHS budget. Bear in mind at the moment, around 6% of the budget and you think, wow, that's a huge amount of difference, isn't it? But again, just as Sarah Jane said before, and you saw in my report, over 90% of that activity is within general practice. We've already established we're the most efficient part of the NHS. So actually, it doesn't seem that much of a leap to get to that point. But of course, this all goes back to our double-running destabilisation and those services being available for patients. But I think it's really, really key that we are a long way from that 14.5%. But that's where the clever people, way beyond my analysis of data, put it that we probably need to be. In terms of the 106, I was quickly doing some numbers around what you might get in terms of your income into your global sum as a GP practice with the new patients coming in, as Sarah Jane talks about. Just on the global sum that you get, you know, the figures I've alluded to in the report, you're probably looking at needing around another 1,600 to 1,800 patients to be able to get one new full-time GP roughly. And I'm thinking, again, to our development that was, you know, our 106 that was allocated to us, it would have probably got you one to two days of a GP a week, which would not have satisfied the number of appointments that patients are having on average now in general practice in Lincolnshire. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Mackinson Saunders, very quickly, please.
Thank you. Well, actually, we did have somebody from the ICB came to talk to us about section 106s. And you have a member of staff who sat where Sarah Jane was sitting, who told us that she phoned up all the district councils on a weekly basis. And it was set out and it's in the minutes somewhere within the last year. What I was going to ask though was, if the ICB's been cut back by 50%, what impact will that have on the service that you can provide to our GPs? And I know it's how long's a piece of string, but...
Yeah. No, thank you, Jill. I don't know whether, well, I think you referred to in your chairman's announcement, in March of this year, the government's announced that there would be a review and therefore a resizing of a number of services. The Department of Health and NHS England would merge and there would be a reduction there. And the Integrated Care Board would reduce by 50% and take on a slightly different role and emphasis. I think it's too early to say in terms of the, how that will impact and how that will change the way we work with colleagues from the ICB and general practice. Our plans have just been submitted. What we know is that we will be working together on a larger footprint, that the emphasis will be on strategic commissioning. The bit that we are then considering from a primary care perspective is if we look at everything that me and my colleagues do, where is that best located and how is it best facilitated? And the other element of the change is very much around how do we transfer some of these functions into providers as opposed to being commissioners? So one of the things we're looking at and we're working with GP colleagues on is how might general practice come together to think about what are the needs and working in a provider space? How might they drive some of the efficiencies and the support going forward? At this point in time, it is really difficult to describe what that might look like. What I can reassure people is that Nick, myself and our team are very close to those conversations so that people understand what we do. And then we can critically challenge, you know, is there a consequence of us not doing this? And if there is, how do we mitigate and support that and what is the design? There will be, there will be an impact, there will be a change. And we know even from going from four CCGs into an integrated care board, we had to change the way we worked with general practice and the way we work internally. So there will be a change. I just don't know what it will look like at the moment.
Well, I think there's a concern from us that basically if we had to go into an East Midlands type model, that because we're almost out on the limb, that we'll get, we'll get the pickings that fall off the table. And we need to be able to avoid that, don't we? We have a huge problem with rurality and old age. We're looking at the Midlands where there are larger conurbations. And we don't really compare. Well, and it is a worry and I think it should be a worry of this health scrutiny committee as well.
Thank you, yeah.
And I think we recognise that and I think just to, again, reassure colleagues, there is ongoing, I think it's almost minute-by-minute dialogue in terms of what services need to be sort of like locally provided to mitigate what you've just described. We're a large county and as we talked about earlier, the needs of our different populations are different in Lincolnshire. You know, if you go from Stamford to Skegness, the needs of the populations are very different. So we do need that presence on the ground. I think that some of the work that... I think that some of the work that has been ongoing, and Reid's been very much involved in this, in terms of reconnecting and building those relationships between providers, is some of the things that are really critical to helping build the services that work in the future. And neighbourhood health, I think, is going to be critically important, particularly between general practice and our mental health trust and our acute and community trust. But I think, I think it's going to be a period of quite significant change.
Would it be possible, Mr Chairman, to actually have an explanation at some stage of neighbourhood health? Because I am not confident about that.
That's noted. Thank you. Dr Baker, very quickly, I know you've...
Yeah, I keep asking for small sections. I intend to keep them small, and then I talk for longer, so I apologise. Yeah, I think we're concerned in general practice, and I think some of that, like a lot of changes, is the concern over the unknown, and things may be more positive than we think as it develops in terms of clustering with our Derbyshire and Nottinghamshire colleagues. But we don't know yet, I think, is the thing. We don't know what we don't know. I think from a general practice perspective, like Sarah Jane said, we are acutely aware of what functions will move to where, how will they benefit or the loss of benefit to general practice impact general practice and our patients? And at the moment, again, we just don't know. I think we've been quite clear, we want to be involved, not just in Lincolnshire but across the cluster as an LMC representing general practice, of what we feel needs to sit where. And what we hope is that we share those visions with our colleagues in Derbyshire and Nottinghamshire. I already work closely with Derbyshire and Nottinghamshire LMC, so we've already started conversations along those lines. But I think it is a challenging time, and as we rightly say, you know, our east coast is very different from some other parts of Lincolnshire, and translating that over to Derbyshire and Nottinghamshire will be a challenge. But we must be strong advocates between us, and that's why we need to start these communications now.
Thank you, thank you, everyone. I just have one question of my own, if I may, before we sum up and end this item. I notice from the NHS statistics on GP staffing for Lincolnshire on NHS Digital that the number of admin staff employed by GPs continues to rise, and that makes me fearful that despite the great uptake of digital, of services by patients, the drive to reduced bureaucracy, that GPs are not actually realising those savings from those initiatives. Can you give us some reassurance on that?
So, I think, I think we've had, maybe had a conversation at committee previously around admin staffing in general practice in Lincolnshire. And I think one of the things we've talked about previously, if I recall correctly, was that due to our challenges of recruiting clinical staff members, be that GPs, nurses, et cetera, we've been as innovative as possible in terms of how can some of the workload that may be a GP in terms of some of the admin, or a nurse, or other member of the team, might be able to safely be delegated to another member, a non-clinical member of the team? So I think, if I recall correctly, we were ahead of the curve in terms of that. In terms of reducing that bureaucracy, I think, yes, you're quite right. There is an ongoing challenge. Would I like us to be in a better position than we are with this now? Yes, 100%, because it would free up a lot of time in GP practices to see all the patients that we don't want to send to A&E, which reminds me of my point that I'd forgotten earlier, which I've been trying to get in already for councillor Martin, was we don't have those stats, but they can be produced of who's attended. But what I was going to say was, if we look at the additional 20% activity in general practice, and we also look that between 2013 and 2023 in A&Es, the percentage of people waiting less than four hours to be seen has gone from 8.1% to 42 or 43%? Sorry, no, wrong way around. Waiting more than four hours has gone from that. Clearly, that demonstrates we just have a lot more people presenting across the services that are available. Sorry for shoehorning that in there. So, yeah, we need to see benefit of that, but we need our teams in secondary care to be stable to enable that as well, and for this work to be embedded. And then maybe we'd be able to see that reduction in some of those admin roles and maybe rediscipated into clinical roles if we can successfully attract people to Lincolnshire.
Just to add to what Dr Baker said, I'd just build on one of his points, actually. I think in terms of the admin roles, what we're also seeing is some investment in terms of staff that support access, so people answering telephones, reception staff as well. So that's part of it, not just around bureaucracy, but that is part of it, and I think we'd all want to see a reduction in bureaucracy. Just to raise to the committee's attention that nationally, there is a bit of work called the Red Tape Challenge, which has been led by Dr Claire Fuller, and again, we mentioned her in terms of the report she provided previously. She's also leading on this piece of work, so really looking at how to reduce bureaucracy across the health system and certainly for primary care. We were hoping that was, that would be out by now, but I think we're just still waiting for that, but it'd be really interesting to see what that says and how we can further reduce bureaucracy, particularly for practices.
Thank you, everyone. So that concludes this item, apart from us considering the report and the actions proposed in the report, which is to consider the reports presented by NHS Integrated Care and the Lincolnshire Medical Committee on GP Provision. My suggested proposal is as follows: one, that the presenters be thanked for their reports and attendance at the meeting, and the information presented be noted; two, that the committee's concerns about patient access, patient communication, the continuation of ICB support for GP practice, and the funding of necessary service expansion be recorded; and three, that further reports on GP provision from the Integrated Care Board and the local medical committee be requested in six months. Do I have a proposer, please, for that? Thank you, councillor Hakes. Do I have a second, a councillor Morgan? Thank you. All those in favour, please? Thank you. Anyone against? Any abstentions? Thank you. Thank you, that's carried. Thank you for your attendance, and I look forward to seeing you again in six months.
Mr Chairman, if the, Mr Chairman, if the ICB's got to have all their plans for the future in place by December, will we be able to capture that information?
We can cover that off when we talk about the work programme.
Sorry?
We can, we can cover that off when we talk about the work programme in an item that's coming up. Thank you. The next item on the agenda, item seven, is quality accounts. This item can be found on pages 77 to 79 of the agenda. Members of the committee will see reference to the quality accounts in the minutes of the last meeting. On the 9th of June, all members of the committee received an email advising that two NHS providers had reviewed their deadline for receipt of statements. This means that the committee may now be in a position to make statements on these two providers. Simon, would you like to elaborate on that for us, please?
Thank you, thank you, Chairman. Yes, so just to explain, a quality account is a document which certain providers of NHS services are required to produce each year. It is an account of the quality of their service. Unfortunately, the name 'quality accounts' sometimes makes people think about finances, so the name isn't helpful. They've been around a few years, and it is an account of the quality of service. So every year, providers, not GP practices but providers of NHS-funded services, prepare a draft document, and this committee, as a stakeholder, has a power, it's not a duty, has a power, if it wishes, to review those documents in their draft form and then make a statement which has to be included verbatim in the final published document. And the timetable for all providers to publish their quality account is the 30th of this month, 30th of June, so that's a couple of weeks away. Back in March, the committee agreed to make statements on five quality accounts, but because of the county council elections and everyone being very busy, every councillor's being very busy, the committee did not do that. However, two, there are two providers, Lincolnshire Community Health Services and United Lincolnshire Teaching Hospitals Trust, who have now indicated that they could take a statement from the committee probably as late as the 27th of June. So I guess they will copy and paste it straight into the document rather than reviewing it through their usual quality committee process. So essentially, it's, it's the committee's, it's in the committee's gift to decide if it wants to participate, and the normal way of doing this is to set up a working group which would meet, well, would have to meet in the next couple of weeks, to, to look at the, to look at the documents and then compile a statement which would then be sent off to the two trusts. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, and we're grateful to those two for ending their deadline so that we can do this. So I think it would be very helpful if we took them up on their offer. So do I have any, I assume we have one group to do both? Logically, that would make sense, so do I have some, any volunteers to serve on a working group to do the, consider the, our response to draft quality accounts of Lincolnshire Community Health Services NHS Trust and United Lincolnshire Teaching Hospitals NHS Trust? Councillor Wim Hurst, councillor Morgan, anyone else? Councillor Kendrick, thank you. I think that would be enough people, and that would be great. Thank you very much for that. So that moves us on, I believe, straight to the proposal, that it be noted, owing to the county council election and the timings for the return of statements, it was not possible to prepare draft statements on the draft quality accounts of the following three providers: East Midlands Ambulance Service, Lincolnshire Partnership NHS Foundation Trust, and Northern Lincolnshire and Ghoul NHS Foundation Trust. And two, that a working group be established with volunteers to consider, draft and finalise a statement on the draft quality accounts of Lincolnshire Community Health Services NHS Trust and United Lincolnshire Teaching Hospitals NHS Trust. Do I have a proposer, please? Councillor Morgan, thank you. Second, councillor Hakes, thank you. All those in favour, please show? Anyone against? That's carried. Thank you very much indeed.
Mr Chairman, is it possible to read some of the, some of these documents? Because I'd be quite interested to read the Northern Lincolnshire and Ghoul Trust document, since it affects our...
Once the final versions are published, we can, we can circulate to everybody. Thank you. Now, finally, moving on to the final item on the agenda, which is the work programme. Simon, again, please, if you could introduce the report, which is on pages 81 to 88. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Chairman. So the proposed items for the committee are set out on pages 82 onwards, so there is a reasonably full plan of items, but that's not to say that there isn't any scope for the committee to suggest items that could, you know, in line with the committee's priorities for work, that could be slotted in to the forthcoming months. Just to add that this time round, I've included, as appendix A, some of the items that were suggested back in March for the committee. Some of these, as you'll see with the, with the bold type, are scheduled for forthcoming dates, and others are just currently not yet scheduled, and it may be that the committee might wish to bring those forwards. For example, there has been reference to NHS Dental Services. That was actually presented to the committee back in February, and the committee may wish to look at that perhaps sooner than maybe a year, you know, a year would perhaps take it into 2026. But that's, say, that's just a suggestion. It's really, this is the committee's opportunity to make suggestions for the work programme. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Yes, I note that we only have two items on the agenda for the July meeting, so if it were possible to schedule a dentistry item, I think the committee would like to have the opportunity very much, given what has been said earlier on today. Any other comments, anyone, on the work programme? Obviously, if anyone has any ideas, please let me know offline. Thank you.
I wouldn't mind cancer services being moved up a bit, if that's possible.
Cancer services?
Yeah.
Yeah, is that on the...
I think it's November.
November.
But, yeah, it's quite far down.
Is it possible to move that, consider moving that forward then to October, where again, we have quite a lot of...
I can certainly try. Some of the leading times for booking in colleagues from the NHS are quite extensive, and I know originally I was looking for September, and neither September nor October has worked, but I can go back and ask the question to see if we can bring cancer care forward. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you. On that case, in that case, I suggest that we, councillor Morgan, you want to come in?
Yeah, yeah. Sorry, I feel a bit like a stuck record today. I keep going on about planning, but I know in the past I had requested that we get feedback from, it would be the ICB, I think, at that strategic level, exactly how they are planning for the population growth. But we keep touching on things, but it's such an important thing to our community, almost like fundamental. It'd be really good to have an practical understanding of what they're actually doing as opposed to, if you're on the ground, to plan for growth. And that would be across our services.
So could we take that one away, Simon? And think how we can, how we can put an item together that covers the whole idea of planning for growth across the board, I think, with not just necessarily the ICB, but all the, all the players? That, because I know it's something that is a concern, I suspect, to all members who are, have a lot of planned housing growth in their areas, and it's certainly a concern that I pick up from my residents.
So this, Chairman, sorry, Chairman, this would be broader than the item. I think there was an item last summer on the section 106 process, but this is a much broader thing about how not just GP, because section 106 is limited to GP practice.
Yes, I think the idea is planning for population growth.
Okay, understood, yeah.
Thank you. I see no other hands raised, so I'd like us to accept the work programme with the comments that we've made. Is everyone in favour of that? Is that okay for everyone? Just show, please, that's fine, and that will be circulated within, in the minutes after the meeting. That concludes the business of the Health Scrutiny Committee. Thank you for attending, and I look forward to seeing you all again next time. Thank you.